All right, I want to call our Select Board meeting together and to order. Tonight is Wednesday. We're having a meeting on Wednesday, September 28, 2022. And before we begin, could I ask everyone to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. I want to just note for the record and our recording secretary that Board member, Mr. Kelly, is not in attendance this evening. He was not able to make this meeting. So we have four board members and we'll move through our agenda. The first item we have is a public hearing for a new liquor license and in addition to that, also a common victual license. There is a public hearing process. I'll read the public hearing notice and then I'll ask the applicant, whoever that might be, to join us at that table in front of us here. So notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen or Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 138 on Wednesday, September 28, 2022 at 7:00 PM at Town Hall located at 1,009 Main Street, Tewksbury, Massachusetts, on the application of La Vida Dolce LLC by Todd Arsenault, manager, for a new liquor license pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, Section 19(c), subsection N., and a common victual license located at 1,866 Main Street in Tewksbury, Mass., consisting of an area of approximately 4,188 square feet in a single-story building. Inputs welcome from the public. The Board recommends comments be submitted in writing by noon time on Friday, September 23. So we have a properly posted hearing notice. This was posted in the publications to make sure that the public is aware. And is Mr. Arsenault here?
Yes, sir.
Come on up here, sir. Grab a chair.
Yep.
You're welcome. Bring anyone you want.
Mike, they're both managers.
You have two partners with you. Yep, grab another chair. That's fine. Welcome to the three of you. So if I could, just for the record, because we're recording the meeting, if you could each just give us your name for the record and just speak into the microphone for me, okay?
Hi, yes, my name's Todd Arsenault, La Vida Dolce.
Thank you, welcome.
Ronnie Pereira.
Michael Paziali.
All right, thank you. Welcome, gentlemen. So do us a favor, just first of all, I think we all have a sense of what you're trying to do. We've read some stuff in the papers and obviously there's a lot of activity taking place over there. So maybe you can just give us a high level of what you're trying to open up, what your business vision is, and then specifically we'll talk about the two licenses that you're requesting, okay?
Okay, so basically I have a few, I have four businesses myself down. I have five children, so.
You have to get one more, then.
Yes, right, so pretty much I just wanted to bring back the old family style, what I grew up with in the city and where not, and just learn how to do business with family and try to have the kids grow into it. Kids from school come by growing tonight and basically over the years, when I met Ronnie and then Mike and later on in life, I just said, you know, the bakery is a place to be, the deli, the bakery, a cafe, and you know, something cordial that as for liquor license, I can tell you what I don't want for the liquor license. I don't want people just coming in to get a drink. You know, if they can buy, you have a cup of coffee or espresso or something like that, that's fine, but I just don't want to be the bar, you know, and I won't be the bar, you know? Although we have the cafe bar, it'll be, it's, we are going pretty overboard on this lately and we just started really stepping up a lot. And I think it's going to be a great place for the community and I love all these surrounding businesses that have been going in lately. It's really, really feels great.
Good to see, right. So you mentioned you're going to have a bakery.
Yes.
And you mentioned a deli. Are you also planning to have a deli as part of the operation?
Yes, specifically Italian foods.
Quarter time cold cuts.
Yes.
Homemade pastry, cheesecake.
Pizza.
Cakes, pizza.
Okay.
Breakfast sandwiches. We have a drive-through window, coffee, bagels, fresh Danish, everything made homemade. I've been doing this since I was seven years old. My family's Paziali Bakery, Mike's Pastry. I left the bakery 20 years ago when my father passed away. I ran Olympus Bakery for the last 18 years and then Todd approached me with this idea and I'm a Tewksbury guy, I'm on the Board of Directors for baseball, I have four children here, and I said to Todd, what I want that we don't have here is I want people waiting in line for fresh bread, pastry, there's nothing here. And I said, and I want to make sandwiches with fresh bread. And when I was a little kid, there was nothing better to me than Paziali's Bakery when I seen 100 people waiting for fresh bread and two seconds later, that box of 200 French bread we just carried out is gone and I want to bring it here.
Excellent.
That's our goal, to bring it here.
There you go.
Things could change as they go.
You're getting close to having that to be a reality.
Yes, yes.
So are you going to have, you must be intending to have some inside seating?
Yes.
Okay. And so let's turn a little bit to the liquor license part of it. So what's your vision for a service of liquor? You said what you don't want to do, but are you trying to sell like cordials or are you selling?
I'd love to have wine available, you know, when coming into an Italian places, wines, there's espresso, coffee, sometimes.
Sambuca. You know, people come into the cafe, they want a cannoli, they want to go sit outside. We want to be able to let them have a coffee and a sambuca, sit outside, but we're not, we're not a bar, you know, we're not a place to go down and sit there and you're going to get wasted.
Kind of jacket cook.
That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for competitive with everybody else that has liquor, that somebody wants to come in and have a coffee with a sambuca, cookie, cannoli, a pastry, a sandwich during lunch, a cold Peroni beer or something. They can come in and they can have an Italian beer with an Italian cold cut sub that you won't get anywhere else.
Okay. So have you, have you planned on an outside seating area?
Yes, we just got approved.
Yep, I was just going to ask if that had been reviewed and approved.
That's really exciting, too.
Because that's a big safety concern, right?
Yeah, we have Jersey barriers that we place up front.
Great.
It's just, I think it's going to give a real, real good feel for the town, especially Alfrisk is one of my favorite. I know they're doing something similar, but it gives such an option and I go to you, they're there three times a week, so it's just, I'm really, really excited, overwhelmingly excited.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, so we have a lot of the paperwork that you're required to submit. We have approvals from the various Town Department contacts. It looks like, I think everything here is pretty much in order. This is one stop along the way, of course, is a liquor license has to be approved by the Beverage and Control Commission. But let me just ask my colleagues if any of them have any questions and I'll look to my left, Mr. Mackey, you want to lead us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by saying, can't wait till you guys get opened. Great concept, looking forward to it. To piggyback off the Chair's question for outside seating, you guys are going to do like the deli style, so you're not going to have servers, correct?
No.
Okay, so my only.
It's very specific.
My only cautionary question would be if you're going to do outside beverages, people walking out with beverages, just a concern on that piece, making sure people aren't, you know, getting their sandwich and then taking a beer and jumping in their truck and driving away. So that's the only, again, there's ways around it.
Yes.
Ways to solve for it, but that was the only comment I had. I didn't know you guys had got outside seating, so congratulations on that.
Thank you. Just to let you know, we will have, when we have outside seating, there'll be staff outside. It won't be just empty on your own, especially.
Awesome.
Five kids, I learned.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Crapman, any comments, questions?
Nope, I'm just hungry.
It's been a long road, but it's been so grateful and so much, such a great lesson and I really, the town is, honestly, it's been, it's been great. It's really, really, I wouldn't choose anywhere else ever still.
Good to hear.
Yes.
Ms. Wellman, any questions from you?
Can you tell me what your hours of operation are going to be? I don't, I didn't see it.
As of now, because I speak a lot with Susan from Angelina's and she gets a good crowd for a dinner, so as of now, I'd like to close a little earlier to let her on dinner, you know, move on without too much traffic coming around and stuff. We did talk about if certain nights we stay a little later or stuff like that, but I think, again, we talked to her and we're trying to figure out exactly what's going to work for the benefit of both of us, because I don't want to just impede on to something that someone already has and built for so long, in my opinion, you know? But yeah, we have good, long discussions, Susan and I, which we just, last week, I don't have a set date, time right now.
So you don't know exactly?
It won't be like a midnight thing, if that's.
We're trying to like seven to maybe six.
Because I think we need to know the hours, don't we?
Oh, you do, okay.
We have to have those for your license.
Oh, I apologize.
Seven to six.
Mr. Montori, can you clarify that? Do we need to be specific with the hours?
Can I, can I just keep that? Well, originally six to six, but on the, like if Friday night, parents get home from work, two hours, maybe nine if we could push something like that on a weekend.
Can we set something in the morning or no? Can you talk about it?
No, we'll talk about it now. The morning would start at seven and it wouldn't go any further later than nine.
There are hours, I can't remember, the early hours are what? Help us remember now.
I'm sorry.
Well, your opening, your common vic hours might be different than your liquor license hours.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So you plan on opening at 7:00 AM for public service or 6:00 AM for food?
We open at 6:00 AM for public service, for coffee and desserts, but not for, I wouldn't expect someone coming in for a espresso martini.
And you'll be open seven days a week at this point, do you think so?
Yes.
He says so.
Yes, he's the major cook and baker and he likes to work at seven days. I work seven anyways.
Do you think that you'll be serving or would want to have alcohol sales on like a Saturday or a Sunday morning?
Yes, that's the most.
You know, like a brunch time or something along those lines?
Yes.
Sunday morning we do.
Is that what you're, Sunday morning?
Yes.
Sunday morning?
Like if somebody wanted to come in and get like some fancy Italian liqueur, you know, with a pastry or something, we're looking for Sunday morning, I would say.
It's what parents' days, Saturdays.
Like a brunch. It's not uncommon. We have some other businesses that serve.
Right, so they want to come down, sit down, watch TV, have a breakfast sandwich or a bagel or whatever and have a drink that they were out to make before, whatever it is that people do. I don't drink, so I don't, you know, I don't know.
My next question, Mr. Chairman, is through you to the Town Manager. If he could let us know what our current inventory of liquor licenses that are available?
Yeah, I can pull that up.
Okay. I don't have any other questions at this moment. Thank you.
So let's take a little pause here while the Town Manager gets the answers to those questions and then we can take it from there.
I do, I do want to say I thank you for your packet. It's very complete. I did read all of it.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your description of your business.
That's my.
So you, you're looking for a full liquor license versus just a cordial license?
Could I refer, my, my wife is very intuitive about all that. Do you mind if I refer to her, what she had in mind for our sales? She's pretty much our project manager for everything.
Of course, she should be part of your team.
Yes, she's definitely part of the team. Want to come up with introductions?
Mr. Chairman, can I have another question now that we got this? So on your license, I understand that you're looking to coordinate with the restaurant next door. Very, that's nice, that you're working together, everything that's happening on that. But you're applying for a license for the year, so if you want to have something and hours change, you know, are you looking to close like on Thursday, Friday, Saturday night at 6 o'clock at night?
No, that's why.
Yeah, there may be, there may be some hours where, you know, you may be interested in, you can always close early and you can do something, you can close whatever you want and post your hours, but you may, you know, I mean, it's up to you to ask the hours of what you want, but most of the restaurants, I believe in the surrounding area, have licenses to 10 o'clock at night or 11 o'clock at night. And that's the typical what they have and if you want to shut down early, that doesn't mean you have to stay open every night to those hours, but you may want to take that in consideration, because if not, you may have to come back to us again asking for a special license to do something.
Thank you.
For the full time.
Yes. Again, we both have large families and, you know, if we were to stay open later too, it would be mostly people in the shop. And my biggest concern is I don't want to overload Suz's. A lot of people say worry about others too much, but I do. And I don't want to overload something that she's been, that for so many years, what she knows she might be coming with us to help a lot.
Mr. Chairman, so there, from an hours of operation based on the Board's policy, Monday through Saturday, the hours that on-premises pouring licenses are allowed is 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM on Sunday, 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Licenses may apply for permission to open at 10:00 AM on Sundays. And then as far as the number of licenses available, not counting the Home Rule petition, which granted us an additional six, there are three available.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's great.
All right, so in light of that information, right, Monday through Saturday, the earliest liquor sale is 11:00 AM and you could have a license that runs through 1:00 AM if you were to request that. And Sunday is a little bit different. The standard hours are 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. The law was changed a few years back, you can request that the opening be at 10:00 AM for service. So, but I believe you'd have to provide us a separate letter on that.
Yeah, once he gets his license, then he can come back with a letter to the Board.
Right. So from what you're telling us, I don't think the opening or the initial service hours are issue, it's just the closing hours, so again, it's your request, so I haven't.
We'd like to request to get the full amount of hours that are available and on Sunday, if we could change that, Sunday we will not stay open late, but I'm sure there'll be, you know, parents early that would like to take a day off on Sunday.
Okay. All right, so we'll consider that. And then what I'd ask you, after we take action on this, just communicate with the Town Manager's office so you can get some instruction on how to address that Sunday opening time, all right? Because there is a process that has to be followed. All right, so in light of that, let me just be clear for the record, the request that you're making on the liquor license is to allow for liquor service Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM and Sundays currently 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM and you will follow through and request an opening at 10:00 AM. All right. All right, so this is a public hearing and that allows for any of your fellow citizens here in Tewksbury, if they have concerns or questions, to raise them for our consideration. And I do want to note that the abutters list was quite extensive and it's pretty clear that you made a lot of notifications to many abutters, so I see three people in the back of the room. I don't know that you're here for this particular matter, maybe you are, maybe not, but this is the opportunity, if you have a question or concern that you want to raise about the requests in front of the Board, this is the time to do that and I would just ask you to go to the podium where there's a microphone. Don't feel compelled, if you don't have anything to say, that's fine, but I want to give you the opportunity so that we can hear what, whatever concern or questions you might have, so.
My question was.
Okay, just do me a big favor, come on up. Oh, did you get your question answered? I'm sorry.
I was wondering, but the lady over there, she asked the question.
Got it, as long as you're all set. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so there are no questions, everybody's good, all right. Okay, so let me ask my colleagues if they have a motion that is consistent with the information that we have in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the alcohol beverage license application for the hours of Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM and Sunday from noon to 1:00 AM as requested.
Good. All right, is there a second on that motion?
Second for comment.
Yes, sir.
Do we have to do the common victual license first?
No, I'll do it separate.
Fair enough.
Good question. So you seconded?
Seconded, yes.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of the motion made, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll vote in the affirmative as well, so that's four to nothing. And then, as Mr. Mackey just pointed out, we also need to address the common victual license, which is a separate license, and I would ask for a motion on that.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion made. Is there a second to approve?
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the Chair will vote aye as well. All right, so we've approved both of those licenses. You do have a takeaway on that 10:00 AM Sunday service time, so just coordinate with the Town Manager's office on how to accomplish that. I believe it's just a notification and the Board might have to approve it, but you should be able to take action on that. And I think you know, but this has to go forward to the State Agency to get a final approval, right?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before they go, I have a question.
Certainly.
When is your anticipated opening date? Okay.
That's right.
It was November and the oven was just delayed. It was supposed to be sent out on November 1st, which is a 10 by 10 rotary stone oven that was just.
Just a small thing.
Delayed from, to the 21st to go out the door, so trying to.
Because we wanted to get them before Thanksgiving. We wanted to be able to make people pies, you know, I make all homemade pies.
You'd be working 72 hours straight.
So it's.
It arrives in a wisdom probably.
We'd like to open, I'd like to open a month ago, but if it's up to me.
Oh, here the 21st, I apologize, instead of the 1st, I'm sorry.
Do you, do you have a date?
The 21st.
The 21st?
21st of November.
All right, so sometime in that neighborhood, right?
Well, I'm sorry, that wouldn't be the opening date, that would be the arrival of an, and of course, the run it and.
Yeah, final inspection.
So maybe hoping before Christmas time?
First and second, we get to Sunday realistically.
Terrific.
Please keep us informed. I know the community is excited about it.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all, welcome, good luck.
Look forward to seeing all you guys.
Yes.
I live within walking distance, so it's going to be great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we did.
Chair. Yeah, thank you. All right, are there any residents that have any concerns other than that liquor license request? No? Okay.
I don't know the time that they're going to be open.
Okay, I'll repeat that. You do know the time, yeah.
What you said.
Yep, okay. Okay, so we'll move to the next item on our agenda and that brings us, under new business, to the warrant for the special Town Meeting. We had at the last meeting reviewed the articles. We tabled Article 6 to this evening with the hope that we would have the free cash certified and that would allow the final numbers to be calculated. So Mr. Montori, you want to update the Board?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the last meeting, we did have our free cash certified in the amount of $7,536,885. At Town Meeting, we are proposing to utilize some of that free cash for one-time expenditures, capital expenditures. We are planning to, we're asking Town Meeting to transfer $2,600,250 from free cash for one-time expenditures. That will leave a balance to be put into the stabilization fund. What we normally do with free cash, we also take $600,000 and set it aside for snow and ice in May, if we have a deficit in snow and ice. So after we take the money, take money and set it aside for snow and ice, account for what we're asking for at Town Meeting, we'll be asking Town Meeting to also transfer the remainder of free cash, which would be $4,336,635, and transfer it into the stabilization fund. The stabilization fund currently has $9,690,721 as a balance. By adding this amount, we'll bring our balance to $14,027,356.
Excellent.
So that's Article 6.
All right, so you intend to amend the article, right?
The article is going to be amended to add that number.
There was not a fixed number in the article, right?
Correct.
As drafted, okay. All right, so could I, is there any discussion on that?
I just have one discussion, it really has to do with the snow and ice. Have we changed the snow and ice budget in the last decade?
No, and the reason we, we actually added money to it at one time, but the problem is if you, depending on the amount you add, if down the road, you want to reduce it, you can't, and then still be allowed to run a deficit in the account. It's the only account you can run a legal deficit. So we've kept it the same and we've taken this money and set it aside every year as a supplement. And we didn't spend all of it last year, I don't think we spent all of it the previous year.
We didn't spend $600,000 in snow and ice?
No. We have 200, I think, in the budget, right? So it's a 800 would be the balance, if I recall correctly. So, yeah, we got off easy.
The salt is expensive. That's all I was thinking is that, you know, it's, we're expecting, I think it's going to be a tough one this year, that's all. But if we haven't expended it, I'm fine with.
Yeah, we, I think we, we ended up transferring the money in just in case, but we never, at Town Meeting, because he had bills to pay, but we didn't end up spending all of it.
My recollection is that we've added money to it each year, so I'm surprised that we actually haven't spent the $600,000, but, yeah, I was mistaken.
Okay, if there are no further questions, what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to approve the amendment to the article.
Are we approving the amendment, sir?
Or recommending adoption, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 6.
Second.
The amendment to Article 6.
Thank you.
Beg your pardon.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor of the recommending adoption of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the Chair votes aye. So that's three to one and for our recording secretary, Mr. Crapman voted in opposition. So now we need a motion to adopt the article as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the, that the Select Board recommend adoption of Article 6 as amended.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, and once again, that would be a three to one vote with Mr. Crapman voting in the negative. And I just want to explain to my colleagues, I'm going to try my best to record the motions by name and the votes when there's dissent, because our recording secretary asked for more clarity. She has trouble with the audio recordings and I'm trying to be a little more deliberate about that, so nothing, nothing personal about who's doing what, just trying to capture the record in an accurate way. Okay, next topic we have is discussion of meeting dates and in the materials you have are, is the summary of our 2022 scheduled dates. We found, as we looked at the calendar for the balance of the year, that we had a very long period of time, I think we were almost a month without a meeting. So we looked at adjusting the dates a little bit and I just wanted to make sure that these dates were acceptable to my colleagues and that your availability would be okay. You can see, of course, for the rest of the year, we'll meet next Monday at Town Meeting. Then we have October 25, November 15, December 6, and December 20. So I'm hopeful those dates are acceptable to everyone. those dates are acceptable to everyone. I can't tell you what they were, but there was a big gap in time. I think we had three meetings instead of five.
Okay.
So it was...
That's weird.
Somewhat problematic. Does anyone have concerns about those? We can adopt it, or if you need time to review, we can put that off until we meet again and approve them at that point.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem adopting these dates as presented, because we can always change them if need presented. I know we had an error in when we were scheduling a town meeting, because we didn't take into consideration, there was a religious holiday on that date, and we had to amend it, which we did immediately. But if there is something that does come up that we aren't aware of, we can adjust it. So if somebody sees that we're doing something, doing something, and they think the meeting should not take place, they can easily call Town Hall and suggest a change. So other than that, I'm fine, and I'll make a motion to adopt, because the board meeting dates as presented.
Yep. These are not chiseled in concrete, but they give us a benchmark, and we can all get them on our calendars. All right. So thank you, Mr. Krappman. So we have a motion to approve the remainder of the 2022 meeting dates. Can I ask for a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'll vote in the affirmative as well. So that will be four to zero for the record. Okay. That brings us to item four, and that's Halloween trick-or-treat hours. There's nothing in the packet, but the town manager will give us the details.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So traditionally, we've used the hours of 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Halloween as the trick-or-treat hours. I confirmed that with the police chief today, and that's what we would be recommending.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And is the date right? We're doing it on the actual date?
Doing it actually on Halloween. Yep.
Okay. All right. So you made a motion in favor?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. All those in favor of those posted hours for recognition of Halloween trick-or-treat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to the town manager's report. Mr. Montori?
Mr. Chairman, I have one bill from town council that asks for approval. It's in the amount of $3,357.50 for the time period of August 16, 2022 through August 31, 2022.
Okay. All right. We all have that, and I'll ask the question on the prior invoice after we take a vote on that. Does anyone have a motion on that particular bill?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the town council invoice dated August 16 to August 31, 2022, in the amount of $3,357.50.
There is one other, right?
Yeah.
There is a second. There is a second. Yep.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, approval of the invoice dated 9/9 totaling $3,357.50, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That would be unanimous. And then, Mr. Montori, you may have overlooked it, but there is another.
There is a second one, in the amount of $3,102.50 for a time period of August 1, 2022 through August 15, 2022.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any questions on that? And if not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the town council bill for August 1 through August 15, 2000, in the amount of $3,102.50.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. So that would be unanimous. Anything else, Mr. Montori?
Just quickly, because Mr. Krappman asked a good question regarding snow and ice. In the last three years, we didn't spend, we spent all of the budget that we had for snow and ice that we appropriated at town meeting, which is $256,000. And then we utilized this past year for FY '22, all but $42,000 of the 600. The year before that, we used all but $114,000. The year before that, all but $221. And then going back to FY 2019, which was a tough winter week, actually were over that budget by $19,000. So we needed more than the 600. So it just gives you an indication. Each year is different.
Thank you.
But I'm expecting the upcoming winter, based on our discussion so far, what we're going to have to pay private contractors. And as Mr. Krappman correctly said, salt prices are high. We're expecting to spend more.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick comment on that. In the past, the DPW has come down here and given us a kind of an update of what they plan on doing with the sidewalks, because we also have installed numerous sidewalks in our community over the past year. So I know they've given us an update of what they plan on doing. So that will, if they plan on clearing those sidewalks as well, that's going to be an additional cost as well. So that I'm sure that'll be something. But it's something maybe you can bring up with the DPW to see, you know, if there's a plan to continue doing the newly, especially, you know, we get new sidewalks on Chorshin, we get new sidewalks in a number of areas. So if we could get an update on that, that'd be helpful as well.
No, it's a great point. What I plan to do is once, once we get a handle on the number of contractors, and we get closer to the snow season, all of the DPW can make a presentation to the board of their complete plan and operations, and make sure the board knows and the general public knows. But, you know, we're starting to sign up contractors. I think we go live on Monday. So we'll be, we'll come in and overhaul plan with the board.
Be very helpful.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to minutes. We have one set of minutes, a very brief, one-page set of minutes for a working session that we held in August. Mr. Krappman, you've reviewed those. Is Clark?
I have. I mean, I present the minutes for our working session for Monday, August 15, for approval. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have, we have a second. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So that would be unanimously approved. And just, just for the record, I want to offer just two comments around the minutes. Some who subscribe to the town's website, they get notified when minutes get posted at various boards. Some may have designated the select board. So you may periodically, in the recent past, have received a bevy of minutes in sequence. And all that flows, obviously, from activity that takes place at this board when we approve them. But the genesis of that is the hard work of our staff in the town manager's office and our recording secretary, who are making extraordinary effort to fill in the blanks of meetings that took place that the minutes have been stalled in the production or overlooked along the way. And they, the two of them in particular, have done a tremendous job of getting all that together, getting the draft minutes on paper, and working with both the former clerk and the current clerk, as well as other members of the board, to make sure that details are correct and substantive information is accurate. So we're hopefully close to the end of that process. But I do want to recognize the hard work that the two of them have put into that effort. It's not an easy thing to go back a year or two and try to recreate information or chase it down and then put pen to paper. So I want to express the board's appreciation. And I know that we're, we're well-staffed now, and we'll stay on top of that situation as we go forward. So it doesn't repeat itself. But I want to recognize that, and I want to thank my colleagues for their input and assistance in helping us get over the finish line on that. So if you're getting those minutes and you see three, four, five sets coming across the internet through your email, that's the basis for it. And you can be assured that they are approved at this meeting before they are distributed in final form. That brings us to board member reports. So let's start with Mr. Mackey this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have nothing for tonight.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Before I go to my colleagues, I'd be remiss. I did have a request to make two announcements, and just in an effort not to be repetitive. I was asked to make known that tomorrow night, the 29th, is the last farmer's market. It's scheduled four to seven at Livingston Street Park. There are over 35 vendors scheduled to participate. But it's the last opportunity for the season to attend or take advantage of the farmer's market. And then the other thing that is important to note is that this weekend, Saturday, October 1, and Sunday, October 2, from 12 to 5:00 PM, both days on Livingston Street, there will be the Fall Festival that takes place. It's a two-day event. There are events on Saturday featuring a Touch a Truck event and helicopter rides for a donation to the Tewksbury Community Pantry. Sunday, there will be a craft fair with a petting zoo, live band, and 10 different food trucks. So if you have questions about those events, you can reach Alex Louder in the Community Development Office. But I want to make sure that that information was made known. So I apologize to my colleagues for jumping in. But, Mr. Krappman, do you have any reports?
Just the survey from the north in Trahan. The schools are still out and about, and people are filling it in. We still have that in. We'll have the answers from that next week. So we have all the input from that survey. It looks like the numbers have been very active. A lot of people in the community have been taking advantage of filling it out. So that's great. We get a lot of input, and the board will review that and come back and make recommendations to the board. The LRTA, I had a meeting last week. They went through their annual warrant. Everything passed. Everything's staying the same. They're doing a number of improvements, getting the buses, trying to, trying to figure out what's, because of the, what happened over the last couple of years with COVID, they're really tinkering with the hours of operation of services, because a lot of people are working different hours. Some people are working from home, some people do that. So they're trying to really reach out to the public and provide services that all residents need. So they're putting surveys out. They're doing a lot of, you know, community meetings in each community, asking what your need is. And I'm looking forward to reaching out and finding out from our community what the residents would like and bring that back to the board. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Krappman. Ms. Wellman?
Really briefly, our NIMCOG meeting was last Wednesday. We had our elections reorganized. And the executive committee, which I'm on, again, it will be doing a retreat with our new director to work on some visioning for that board. And NIMCOG is having its annual meeting at UTEC on Wednesday, the 19th of October. I gave an update on the elementary school building committee last time, but we're reaching substantial completion will be, I think, Richard, October 25 or October 28, something like that. Does that sound right to you?
For...
Substantial completion for substantial completion.
Oh, October 28, I believe.
October 28, yeah. And then it'll be final completion in December, with students ready to move in in January. It's very exciting, on time and on budget. And you mentioned the other items that I tended to mention, Mr. Chairman. So thank you very much for that.
All right. Thank you all. I have two other things I want to mention, opportunities or requests of my colleagues. The Mass Bay Transportation Authority, otherwise known as the MBTA, has an advisory council. For the first time, to my knowledge, they reached out to the town and specifically to me as the chair. We have a seat at that table if we so choose. It generally is designated to the chair, but can be delegated, if you will, to another member of the board. And I do not have the bandwidth to attend that advisory council and participate in that, representing the town. I want to make that known to my colleagues. You don't have to answer now, but if you have interest in representing the town on the MBTA advisory council, if you can reach out to me, and we can take steps to do that. And I will designate, hopefully, one of you. I also want to make sure Mr. Kelly's aware of it. He's not here tonight. But if he has any interest, I want to make sure he has an opportunity to respond. The second is another request we had. I had opportunity to converse with the chair of the select board in the town of Andover. And he inquired about the town of Tewksbury's willingness to participate in what's called the perambulation effort.
Oh, yes.
Every so many years, the towns that abut one another need to sort of validate the borders, the markers that exist to delineate between the respective communities. It's more of a, in my opinion, a ceremonial effort than a, you know, anything of substance. But the request was made to see if anyone from this board wanted to participate. His intention is to schedule something on a Saturday morning in the month of October. So if one or more of you want to participate in that, please let me know, so I can communicate to the board chair, and we can take it from there. And then the last item I have is, we probably should ask the town manager to make sure we schedule a board meeting for the night of town meeting. We have no articles to review, but in the event that there's some activity required during town meeting, we ought to post a meeting, start the meeting right before the commencement of town meeting, and we can adjourn it at the conclusion. But I want to make sure that you were aware of that, and the town manager was in agreement that he could post that for us. So maybe 6:45. Is town meeting at 7:00 or 7:30?
7:00.
Maybe 6:45. Just post it. And we, we don't have any business items right now, but if something comes up, we would have the ability to meet and discuss it. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, can I just mention two things?
Absolutely.
Because I have enough meat for a couple of weeks. I just remembered. There will be a mattress ban in place starting in November. Public services will no longer pick up mattresses and dispose of them for the community. They cannot go to Covanta where we dispose of our, currently dispose of our bulky items and solid waste. We have contracted with UTEC out of Lowell to pick up and dispose of our, of residents' mattresses. They'll pick them up, and they'll bring them to their location to recycle the parts, the components. That will start on 10/24. They will be up and running as a website to take, to start scheduling around 10/15, October 15. We'll get more information out to residents, but that will all go through UTEC, and there will be a disposal charge of $34 per mattress or per box spring. So it's for each one. It's not combined. So we'll get more information on the website, but that is coming, and it will be a change for residents. The other item I want to mention, National Grid will be working on increasing their electric rates for residential customers and commercial customers. We do have a community choice power rate for residents to take advantage of, which is 10.9 cents. I believe National Grid's rates were looking at going up over, I should pull it up, for residential, is looking at 33.89 cents. So residents who are already in that plan will be fine. But those who may have opted out or unaware of it should go on the town's website under the Town Manager section and opt in. We will be doing a mailing to residents about this to let them know. But that's a significant difference for residents to take advantage of.
Is that, is that supply or delivery?
It's just supply.
It's supply?
It'll still be other costs that National Grid will probably tack on, but just the supply rate alone will make a difference.
Yep. There's a lot of talk about that right now in terms of increases.
From the town's standpoint, we've locked in our electric supply rate for our public buildings. I believe we're at around nine cents. So we're locked into that through 2025, 26.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, not the electric part, but the removal part, the, our contract is under review currently, right? With, when is that contract up for the trash removal?
June 30. It expires.
June 30 of next year?
Of this, yeah, of 2023, yeah.
Okay. And I know in the past, not like every other business, we've had, every business has been shortage of, you know, work power, workforce. And I know last year, we had a couple of problems with people putting leaves and branches and things like that. And we're getting to that time of season again. And, you know, I know we got a number of calls that things weren't being picked up. Things were, is there a way that, since we're going to plan toward that, and I know we're probably going to post in probably October, November, you know, pick up leaves, pick up branches, is there a way that we can find out some information about, you know, do they have enough people? Are they going to be able to do that on time this year? I just remember getting a number of calls of stuff that was left behind, and the bags fell apart, and then there was stuff that was out there. and then there was stuff that was out there, what was going on. And it was not by any, I'm not blaming the company. Every business was struggling to have a workforce and to be able to do those type of things. So I understand where it was coming from, but it's still frustrating. If you go out and you're said, "I'm gonna put it out on a certain date," and then they're left there for two weeks.
Yeah.
And you have to do it all over again. So I think that would be helpful to say, "We had an issue last year. Can you please address it this year so we don't have that issue?" And see if we can work ahead of time so we can address it.
No, that's a great point. We actually met with the root supervisor for Republic Services and started talking about branch and leaf pickup. What we're gonna do for the time period that we're doing that, we're gonna suspend bulk pickup for the month, just because it allows us to ensure that the manpower and the trucks are available for leaf pickup. People just have to hold on to the bulk waste for that time period. And we'll get information out to residents, just educating them again on what they need to do during that time period. You put your leaves out on a Monday, and they're gonna sweep the town during that week. And then next week, put it out again, and they'll sweep the town. So the new root supervisor, who wasn't there, and I remember the problem, it was very, very bad. He's done a good job keeping an eye on how things are going, and we'll make sure we continue to talk with them and stay on top of it. But we think by suspending bulk pickup for that time period, that will help.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn at, at what, 7:52?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned, and we'll see everyone, hopefully, at town meeting on October 3.